You guys are good.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, you're ready to go.
Very good. All Board Supervisor Committee of Order. If everyone will join me at the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions, deletions, or other changes to the agenda that anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I just have the request to add a calendar item to your agenda this evening. And that is for SUP 21-03, the special use permit application from Central Virginia Electric Co-op. And that recommendation has been forwarded to you all for replaying session.
All right. I'm 13. Anything else? Okay, so we entertain the motion.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, and is that with the change to the?
Yes.
Change. Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. All right. Next is Special Presentations and Appearances. First up is Life Saving Awards. Do you have anything while I go up there, Mr. Voorhees?
I do. Whoop. Press the button there. I do, Mr. Chairman, thank you. On the morning of September 11th, 2021, at the annual Orange County Street Festival, an older female walking with a small group, including several young children, was getting ready to cross over the train tracks when a plastic fireman's hat belonging to one of the children was blown onto the tracks. At the same time, a train horn blew and the crossing arms began coming down to prevent pedestrians from crossing. The female quickly ran onto the tracks to retrieve the fireman's hat. She made her way across the first set of tracks but fell face-first when reaching the second set of tracks. She tried to get up on her own but tripped and fell again. Captain Jason Smith and Major Mike LaCasse quickly ran to assist the female. Along with some unidentified citizens, Captain Smith and Major LaCasse were able to pick up the female and carry her to safety. Seconds later, the train came along the same tracks the female had just been moved from. If not for the quick actions of Captain Smith, the female could have sustained serious bodily injuries or even death. It is with great pleasure, Mr. Chairman, to present a life-saving award to Captain Jason Smith, Orange County Sheriff's Office.
Look at the camera and smile. I know that's not normal, but. Orange County Life Saving Award. This certificate is awarded to Captain Jason Smith. His quick and heroic actions were directly responsible for life-saving act on September 11th, 2021, when he assisted a citizen after falling on train tracks just moments before train came along, ultimately resulting in saving a life. Jason, thank you.
Thank you.
And this just shows what our sheriff's office does on a daily basis. And congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, the next item is a presentation of certificate of appreciation to Mr. Kurt Hildebrand.
Who?
Mr. Hildebrand, for those who don't know you, if you could step up.
Just me.
Oh. That Kurt Hildebrand.
Did you have any written comments for this young man?
Nothing needs to be said, Mr. Chairman, but.
Exactly. Thank you.
But I would say nevertheless that it's been a pleasure for me personally and professionally to get to know Kurt in this about year and a half that I've had a chance to get to know him. His reputation preceded him and it's still remembered in a previous jurisdiction. And he has made a big imprint on the communities in which he has served. And so Kurt, I want to tell you from my heart, I wish you well on a much deserved retirement. It's been great to get to work with you.
Thank you.
All right, let's do the official part here. You have to look at the camera and shake my hand. I know that pains you. Certificate of Appreciation. The County of Orange presents this certificate to Kurt Hildebrand and wishes to express its sincere gratitude for his 14 years of dedicated service. His wisdom and commitment have inspired many and will be remembered for years to come. We wish him good health, happiness, and relaxation as retirement. Congratulations, Kurt.
Thank you.
There is a small, and just real quick, I would like to say, I started working with you when I was a business owner. And you didn't throw me out of your office the first time I walked in there. I was very surprised. But it has always been a pleasure working with you, whether it was as a contractor before I was involved in county government or being within the county government. You've always been very professional, very concerned about everything that you have done and taken way too much personal interest in it. That's why your hair color has become what it is. And hopefully, your wife can put up with you in the years to come.
Yes?
Yes.
Congratulations, Kurt.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
You can stay up here and say something if you'd like.
Kurt, I was around when you came off board and I'm around when you're getting off. It's been great. You've been somebody that could always be counted on to do your job above and beyond. And we hate to lose you, but we're happy for you because you're going to get to go play now.
Thanks very much.
And good luck on the fishing.
Thank you. When I become famous, I'll come back.
Thank you. We'll be tuning into the OLN network and watching for your own fishing show.
Right, right.
Very good. All right. Next is quarterly update Fire Chiefs Association. Yep, but awesome. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to start inviting the rest of the chiefs of the association. Mr. Chairman, gentlemen, and ladies and gentlemen, once again, thank you for giving us the opportunity to come and visit with you tonight. We're going to go over a few highlights of what we've been up to and how we've been trying to stay out of trouble. We are sure it's working a lot today.
Yes, sir. It's showing almost great.
Yes, sir. So the first slide is just the agenda I'll jump over. So I threw this one in. This time, we have continued to, I don't want to call it struggle, but we've had a large number of the volunteer organizations who have had to deal with COVID either through positive exposure or because they were exposed to other folks and, of course, have been going through it. It's been fairly mitigated across the counties here over the last month, but it has been quite a challenge. I know at my station alone, I had seven in quarantine one time for positive onset, three just by the nature of the job. I can tell you luckily that none of those cases were through their operations at the fire company and they all either resulted for family members or their career, as I call it, job in various counties. So we're getting back up. We're still heavily involved in COVID restrictions. Our folks, as Mr. Marshall, when he went by us on a rec the other day, noticed we were wearing masks and thought it was kind of strange and unsure, but it's always that person that we're leaning over in a car accident, whatever the case may be, that we have to be nervous about. So on the next slide is the first of the two grants. Obviously, the Virginia Fire Chiefs Association in conjunction with the Volunteer Workforce Solutions, IAFC. I have finished the draft version three, I guess I'll call it, of the Recruitment and Retention Plan. And I believe Allison told me that was distributed to you all. Mr. Voorhees has already been, has provided me some of his initial review comments and we'll get into it a little deeper. The good news is we picked up nine new applications, as you can see, and welcomed, from those applications, we've welcomed seven new operational members. Four of those are untrained, so we're working to schedule our next academy. And the others were already certified from career departments. And then lastly, we also picked up three admin support. Most of the fire companies have added that as a membership category to our bylaws so that instead of having to use operational firefighters to be secretaries and treasurers and things of that nature, we've been blessed with a lot of interest in folks who want to help the fire companies and not go into burning buildings or deal with fatalities where the case may be. So that's all good information. Over the last quarter, we have participated in 10 combined events. So they weren't dedicated solely as a recruitment event. Many of our threads were done doing our latest anniversaries. As you know, the Orange Volunteer Fire Company celebrated 100 years. Mine runs 75 and Lake of the Woods was at 50. So we took advantage of those celebrations to also set up recruitment tables, hand out flyers, brochures, wherever the case may be. And I've already told you about the plan that's out for your review. I look forward to any comments you might have. There is no expectation of ownership here, so any help would be of a great service. And then we're also continuing to participate in a lot of the free leadership seminars that are being offered by BFFS and IAFC. Some of them sound a little strange, like how to deal with difficult people. I know that never happens in the fire EMS service. But some of them are actually pretty insightful and as well as some of the ones that are being offered by the military, they've allowed us to participate because, quite frankly, in my humble opinion, that is the true definition of leadership. If there's no questions, I'll move on. So the FEMA grant, this is the one where we got that significant amount of money. We awarded multimedia and marketing contract to First Arriving. And we have been working on the landing pages. Let's see if it will come up. I might get lucky. Can you see that in your display? Great. So the landing page is essentially the first page anybody that has any interest, whether just for knowledge or is considering joining any of the volunteer organizations, would go to. From this landing page, we would have a streamlined process of applications or interests or whatever the case that comes in, instead of individually to all the different fire companies as you go. The most recent thing that we've added was the Y Volunteer page. And some of these are just placeholders on the photos. Part of the contract that we're scheduling them now is they're going to come out and we're going to take videos or make videos of the training site and at all the stations, as well as a lot of individual photographs that we're going to add. Our goal is to get this completely up by the end of the year so that when interest comes in, and we'll also be distributing what they call non-electronic marketing materials. So we're talking about signs, brochures, wallet cards, things of that nature. We're doing more than one thing at a time. But the nice thing is that when someone applies here, they fill out a simple questionnaire line. It'll streamline through one person who will initiate the background checks and fingerprint requirements for the Department of EMS and BFF. So that while we're going through the physicals and setting up times to talk to these folks, all of that things that have to be done in the background, especially on BDAD side, is getting done and it doesn't slow the process down. One thing that we found during our analysis is if it's more than a week to 10 days before we get in touch with these folks, they're already losing interest. So we're trying to dramatically cut that down significantly. And since you have the material, I'll let you visit that at your leisure. So like I said, we developed the Y Volunteer page. I haven't had a chance to look at it all and we're scheduling all the video shots. The wallet cards have been a big success for us. They're essentially the size of a business card and no matter where we go, we can handle them. Especially at the colleges and at the high schools, we can have some interest. Right now, they're solely assigned or they talk about a specific fire company. But the end goal would be we take them to the leadership page and we're making our progress through that endeavor. But we're making significant progress on that. And I thank Mr. Voorhees for helping us with the design of the webpage or the IPS site to get there and everything's working out well. The R and R committee's been busy. As I told you, we sent out the current draft and everybody has that, along with being provided to yourself, the county administrator, all the chiefs out at the committee has it. And the IAFC Spencer Cheatham and VFC chief, let's see, now chiefs, I'm losing my mind. It must be me saying. They're also offered to look at that. And I've called a few folks in Goochlin County and in a few other places and asked if I sent it to them that they would provide me some input as well. We also have promised, or I should say, I've been writing the bi-weekly letter or column for the Orange County Review. So actually, it's being seen by more people than I thought because I'm getting, I should have never put my phone number in there because I'm getting lots of phone calls, which is good. And for the answers that I don't have or specific questions to an individual organization firing EMS gives me the ability to send them that way. Mr. Chairman, I did get ahold of the Freelance Star. We exchanged emails twice. They asked for a sample. I gave it to them and they never called me back. I even asked them what the cost would be and it just was worth a shot. Yes, sir. So it was worth a shot. The chiefs meetings, I promised you that we were going to do two things. One, we were going to make the chiefs meetings once we got a larger venue. And I guess we will here shortly in Public Safety Building, open it up for folks that wanted to come in because all the information that we have are talked about, other than HIPAA or incidents, are obviously publicly released information, as well as scheduling the two hall meetings. I decided to postpone those until the numbers of positive cases in Orange County continue to come down a little bit. I just think we're, since it would have to be done indoors, I think we'd be, you know, the way on the safe side and not go down that route. The plan is to still do this and one in each under the county. But for right now, unless you gentlemen have a different opinion, I think we're better off by postponing this. So other major objectives, we are learning the procurement process. I'm not my chiefs and apparatus committee because I work in the Defense Department. I deal with contracts all the time. But for the CIP, for the brush trucks and the one tanker, it's been a learning process. We're drafting our own process and procedures to make sure we're complying with fire regulations. But at the same time, we're hoping to be in front of you gentlemen relatively soon. The two MOUs that are outstanding, the one on the land mobile radio, I haven't got anything back from Stephanie. I'm actually probably swamped or she's waiting for answers. And then, of course, the draft service agreement. I sent that to the county administrator and as professional as he always is, he sent it back to me. He was a far better editor than I was, so he streamed out a little bit more. We're looking at that, but our goal is to have that back in the beginning of November so that it eventually ends up in front of you gentlemen for review and approval. And then, of course, we have not started the Articles of Incorporation and Bylaws revisions for the chief association just because, you know, I've only got so much bandwidth. And, you know, something has to sit off to the side of the road, another banner. We have not slowed down on call volume very much, so things are keeping us busy. Moving forward, this is the timeline, which is constantly being revised. This is the latest update, most of which I've already talked to you. We're keeping an integrated schedule so that we can hold folks' feet to the fire. We're working on many other things like our revision to our training committees and communications committees as we implement the new system. So there's a lot going on and we're trying to get our arms wrapped around everything.
Sir.
I know the company 21 did rehab on one of their units.
Yes, sir.
The tanker at Lake, rehab, needs to be.
The tanker?
No, I mean, I am not, I can tell you just from operating with it, that truck's in really bad shape. So from, and it's getting to the point now that all of the parts in the, in the system are all going into new construction and it's a chore. I just got new rotors for my engine and it took six weeks to get them. So it's crazy, absolutely crazy.
Any other questions, comments?
Sir.
You've been targeted when you would comment back on the recruiter.
I believe I asked like the beginning of December is what I sent to my people around one December. The goal was to hopefully get together and look through them and go over them. You're probably going to look at some of the list I've provided there, Mr. White, and want to know what I was drinking that day when I was typing this.
We all have that. We have a few weeks to look at that.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I promise you, if you miss it by a couple of days, I'm not going to say anything. All right, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Allison.
You're welcome.
Next is a presentation from Wrapping Honic Electric Cooperative. Their president and CEO, John, come forward. I'm not even going to attempt to butcher your last name.
Sure thing. It's Hugh, and just call me John. And Mr. Chairman and board members and administrator and county team, I am John Hugh, the president and CEO of Wrapping Honic Electric. Really delighted to be visiting with you all this evening. And let me just first just express my appreciation for all that you all are doing to support the county and the region. It's a time of unbelievable challenge, but also a time of great opportunity. And I understand how tough that makes the role of the county team and, of course, the board supervisors. So my hope tonight is to just give you a good solid update on Wrapping Honic Electric, which would be the cooperative serving some of your county citizens and answer any questions you might have about any of our plans or anything we can do to help further facilitate and enable in the community here. Let me first just take a moment, and I don't know if you all have the slides up there. Hopefully, you can see, and I think it's being live streamed here. But with respect to the National Co-op Network, it's just good to take a quick step back and realize that electric co-ops cover 50, 60% of the nation's landmass. Co-op serve in 88% of all U.S. counties. And collectively, there are about 900 electric co-ops across the nation. So it's a really strong network. We do a lot of collaboration, a lot of cooperation amongst our network, and that's really one of our greatest benefits in terms of our overall strength. REC today serves portions of 22, just beautiful counties. And certainly, it's a beautiful time of year here in Orange, no doubt. We have a 4,000 square mile territory, a little over actually now, 170,000 accounts. Our team is actually a little under 430. We have 423 active employees at the moment and about 10 accounts per mile. In Orange, just over 12,000 homes and businesses that we serve and about 1,100 miles of total infrastructure and several large and very, you know, critical accounts that we serve that you all are, of course, familiar with. And we do our best to make sure that we are a top-notch provider for everything residential, farm, commercial, and even industrial where we encounter that across our service field. Completely proud of our team. They are doing a phenomenal job and the challenges that they have been confronted with and have faced during the pandemic have been immense, from ice storms and, you know, we had lightning last night in our service territory, which is a little unusual for this time of year. But everything that we have thrown in our team, they have absolutely been handling it. And I'll talk a little bit towards the end about how our membership is reacting to that. Our team is also incredibly caring. That's one of our leading core values. That has been an important, very important feature and characteristic of our team during the pandemic. We have worked while families and businesses couldn't make ends meet to keep their power on. We've been working since then to put those accounts on long-term arrangements to come up with a way for them to, to get caught up on their electric bill. And we're happy to report that those have been successful efforts, but it's still ongoing and we're working closely to make sure that our membership is stable and that during the pandemic that they didn't have to worry about electricity being disrupted. Virginia did have a moratorium on disconnects, disconnections that began in March of 2020 and really just kind of expired just about the last month or so here. And we have moved thousands of accounts to long-term payment plans to help them get caught up. As a community enabler, facilitator, supporter, we have some really strong programs. Our Power of Change is probably our most notable program. We have over 30,000 members that are voluntarily enrolled in that program today to help generate dollars to help local nonprofits. The program is getting so big, it's getting tough to manage. Quite frankly, we had over 100 applicants of nonprofits this last hunting round. So we are working to kind of make the application process easier for the future, investing on the whole over $350,000 a year back in the communities. And that includes, also includes our employee-funded efforts such as dramatic and strong participation in United Way, as well as a internal charitable program, Project Big Heart, that we help to support local needs. From a governance perspective, and obviously, as a public body, you all understand governance, understand good governance, we have done a lot with respect to REC. We're a federal borrower, so we need to, and we do comply with a multitude of federal standards and guidelines from the USDA's Rural Utility Service. Beyond that, we're also a fully regulated utility here in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So we're open book with the State Corporation Commission and make sure that the commission is satisfied in our plans and our investments in terms of our, the grid and things going forward. And then beyond that, we've been very proactive. Our board directors have been very proactive, making sure that we put a lot of our information in transit, a lot of our information available on our website for our membership and for the general public, quite frankly. So if you haven't been on our website recently, it was rebuilt last October and you might take a quick look at it sometime. Locally, and again, mostly this is in there for your file, but just our Sanford Reeves, our, one of our board members who was recently named secretary, actually, his region encompasses, he's elected by the membership of Orange, but his region encompasses Orange County. My assistant, Whitney Watts, is always available. A few, several names across the bottom that are very, I think, important. Mark Ponton, I know Mark has been involved in the broadband discussions with FiberLink and others. Sean McDonough heads up our, kind of our regional operations for both our Coal Pepper and Blue Ridge regions, which includes this, this western side of our territory includes Orange. Probably most folks know Oliver Price. He's extremely well-known in our region. Oliver is involved in so many ways, working to make sure that we are in touch with all the things we need to be involved in locally. Casey Hollins supports a number of our charitable efforts. So if something that the county needs or an agency or organization, any county needs some assistance, Casey is our best contact. And one of our more recent, about a year ago, additions to our team is Felicia Anza. Felicia is here to help us with economic development. And each of the counties we serve may have very different views on what their goals are. We wanted a team member on our team to make sure that we were helping land those deals and helping the counties or the towns that we serve be successful in whatever their goals are. So, you know, two of the more unique roles here is that we now have an individual leading fiber and making sure that we are being what we need to be to help enable fiber and the same thing for economic development. In terms of responsiveness, we are always working to make sure that, we try to avoid adages, but when they do occur, we have team members in the community. I believe we have 19 or 20 employees that actually live in Orange County and others that are in close proximity to the county. We are investing a lot into the grid, historic levels for REC, around 70 million a year in terms of capital investment into the grid to maintain and update our over 17,000 miles of infrastructure. Some of that's at transmission level, at substation level, it's reliability, it's, you know, and we also have a program that looks at our weakest circuits, our circuits that did the poorest in one year. And how do we invest in those to get some, some quick responsiveness to make sure that that area of the grid is being updated? So I hope that you're happy with the, with our iconic yellow trucks and more importantly, the great team that's driving them and leading those crews. In terms of the economic outcomes, the co-op is both challenged and helping with the opportunities of some pretty dramatic trends in growth across our region. We are powering up everything from rural farmland and agritourism to, you know, vibrant downtown communities to high-density growth and planned developments. And we're seeing about 3,000 or more new accounts on, by average, per year. That did not slow down with the pandemic. We saw 2020, we would continue to grow. We serve a number of areas in and around the National Park Service, including Big Meadows Lodge. If you've ever been up to Big Meadows, that's kind of the end of the line, so to speak, where we start to. where we start to meet up with Shenandoah Valley Electric Co-op that covers the other side of the mountain. But we are, you know, we're making sure that our programs are sustainable and responsive to the environment. Regarding COVID, just a few things I'll mention. Continue, our team's done really well with adaptive operations, making sure that we're doing the right things and doing it wisely. The board voted both in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one to put back a total of twenty-three million dollars in capital credits to help bring down power costs for those, for those members, for all of our members. We had a rate reduction, a net bill reduction in January of twenty twenty-one, which is helpful. And beyond that, we facilitated four point eight million dollars in care funds back into accounts that were behind our power bills. We are expecting and very hopeful that we'll have a similar, if not greater, allocation from the American Rescue Plan, which could be five million dollars or more. We have sent our data to the State Corporation Commission on behalf of our membership and hoping that those dollars will begin to flow to help those households and businesses catch back up.
How did you determine your allocation for delinquent accounts?
Great question. So that was done in cooperation with the State Corporation Commission. They asked all of the electric, water, and gas utilities, excluding Dominion, to provide a tally of their arrears that occurred for the first round of funding. It was between March of twenty twenty and, I believe, October, the end of October. So we provided that data. When they, when they provided that to REC, we were able to basically push that in a way to the accounts in an equal fashion. But what we had to do the first round was to actually get the accounts to conduct an attestation. So we had outreach to over ten thousand accounts to get those account holders to sign off on an attestation. The commission has looked favorably this time on the ability for the co-op to do a single attestation to more readily get those dollars for this second, second round of funding, which we are anticipating. And hopefully that answers your question.
What percentage of accounts did you have to deal with? You said the number ten thousand. So that's, so that's about, what, eight percent or some number like that?
We, we, great question. At the time of this last, at the time of the governor's state of emergency expiring and the disconnection moratorium ending, we had seventeen thousand member accounts with one hundred dollars or more in arrears. Our team contacted, mailed, contacted, phone called, and brought that number down dramatically. Some households were able to just catch up at that time. Others went on long-term payment plans. So at one time, it reached seventeen thousand, which is actually over ten percent of our accounts. Or right at ten percent of the accounts, but over ten percent of the membership, because the membership numbers are a little less than the account number.
That's a significant impact, yeah.
With respect to our power supply, I know I'm kind of jumping around, but I would characterize REC's power supply as extraordinarily well-balanced. We have every really major fuel source, including renewable energy. But from a baseload perspective, we are, we have nuclear out of the Montana facility. We have coal baseload facilities. We have some of the cleanest natural gas facilities in the nation. We have hydroelectric allocation through the federal government. We have an increasing amount of solar and wind in the portfolio. And we're doing this in partnership with our generation transmission provider, which is Old Dominion Electric Co-op headquartered in Richmond.
What would you say your percentage of renewables is?
Yeah, it's about, about eleven percent right now. It's so, and that includes that hydro allocation. One of the things that is a challenge is the permit. And, you know, our counties we serve have a lot of requests at this point in time. I know Orange receives a lot of requests for solar development, and so that's one of the things that is an issue that we kind of have to work through, through the Commonwealth, as to how far we can go with renewables and how much of that the counties are interested in hosting in the regions. Just a couple of, I think, quick trends in the energy sector, distributed energy. You know, they, in the form of rooftop, for instance, we have over two thousand accounts that are in our net metering program. That means we use the grid to support them. They have solar that can support their site. When they don't have enough generation, maybe at night or on short winter days, we are providing the excess power they need. When they have excess generation, we're buying that back and transporting it to their neighbors.
Are you buying it back at retail rates or wholesale?
It's an avoided cost.
Okay, all right.
Yes, so it's more of a wholesale signal, and we do something that's pretty beneficial for the members. We actually, some utilities do a monthly true-up. We actually look at more of an annualized true-up. In fact, we've been allowing our members to roll over excess generation even from year to year. So the reason that's helped was because they might over-generate in the spring or the summer even, but usually it's the spring. But they're probably going to under-generate in the winter. So when we allow those credits to roll, the member is avoiding full retail. So they're getting the best benefit of avoiding full retail. When they do have any extra and we buy it, that's a lesser.
But they can actually roll the credits over to avoid retail somewhere.
That's right. Yeah, it's an extremely fair approach. That is, and it's one of the reasons that we're seeing those numbers go up. We also have a program for the homeowner that might be, well, maybe they're not a homeowner. Maybe they're leasing or renting, or maybe they're a homeowner with a rooftop that won't work. We also have Community Sun Chair Program, which I believe has nearly nine hundred subscribers now, where you can buy solar energy without having it on your site. So it's solar from the utility's gallery. We have a peak time relay program that's working to reduce summertime peaks. EV charging is the next huge wave for us. I'm telling you, we are preparing for this in every way that we can. A rural driver, a typical rural driver, may drive twenty-three, I think twenty-three thousand nine hundred is the mileage for a rural driver across the United States. If that household replaces one typical gasoline vehicle with an electric vehicle, two things happen. One is, well, three things. One is their demand for energy goes up. Secondly, we sell them thirty to forty percent more electricity. So it's not just the peak demand, but it's more volume. And lastly, they can save as much as twenty-five hundred dollars a year on fuel costs. So there's a real opportunity for our members that might be the typical commuter or even the longer-distance commuter. And as we see, you know, the Ford F-150 Lightning, additional vehicles that might fit the needs for rural drivers, I think we're going to see this be just a tremendous wave for us, which, which means our grid has to be ready for it. We have to have good data. That's why some of the broadband connectivity is very important to us. And we are currently conducting studies to look at all of our distribution transformers to see which ones could accommodate today charging and basically trying to model the systems to understand how much EV charging we could, we could easily accommodate or naturally accommodate, if you will, at any one given location.
But I can see a lot of need for increasing capacity in some areas.
It's a big need, and this is one that is a big, a big issue across the United States, and it's something that I don't think is solved yet. The amount of new generation that it's going to take and potentially energy storage that it's going to take to support the electrification of just vehicles, much less, you know, other construction equipment and those types of things. This is an incredible amount of energy, and the pace of what the manufacturers are coming out with is far in excess of the pace of building pipelines or building even solar or wind. The pace of EV transformation could easily outstrip the pace of building new generation in Commonwealth across the nation. So it's a big issue.
How do you consider capacity when you're looking at large new developments?
Yeah, so what's interesting, and if you compare and contrast a large new development, we've got a couple of things. First of all, with a new, let's say, single-family home development or even mixed-use, you know.
Twenty-seven hundred and fifty homes, is that about that?
Yes, yeah. So that might take a year of permitting. You see it coming. We know where it's going to go. And we have an opportunity to kind of size that up. Now, as time goes on, we're sizing that up with the understanding that every home could have electric vehicles. The issue with EVs today is actually that if you look at where it's most economical first is for like DVO routes, for distribution centers. And that's why you're seeing companies like Amazon and any of the rental companies now starting to invest in this. Those energy demands could come to us overnight. It's not like that development that we see coming from a year away and takes a year to build it. We could have a site along an interstate or a major highway that needs central charging for a fleet, and it could be there in three months. And so that's a different pace, quite honestly, than our industry's moved at in the past. So there's a challenge there with these concentrated loads. It could be school buses. It could be a distribution center. And then there's now the compounding effect of a new development with a couple thousand homes. That has its own energy impact, and put on top of that, is every house going to have two EVs, you know, eight years from now or ten years from now? So we've had a lot going on in our industry.
Yes, so I guess what you're saying is it's cheaper to go ahead and buy an electric car and buy the electricity from you than it would for us to buy gas or diesel?
So that's how the economics work. The economics are that your net fuel costs can be dramatically reduced with electric, with an electric vehicle or electric chassis, even it's a truck, you know, and that.
At least they can, you know. What's, what makes that?
So that analysis on rural drivers saving twenty-five hundred dollars a year was based on, this was done around August when I went, stood in front of our membership annual meeting. It was based on the current national price of gas, which was around, around three dollars at the time per gallon. Maybe just touched less than that in August. It was based on twenty miles per gallon of a gasoline vehicle, and it was based on an average electric efficiency of current electric vehicles that are on the market. And so if you look at their expense for electricity, based on REC's rates today, our current rates, just call it twelve cents per kilowatt hour or a little less even. But if you look at that rate and you compare that to what they would have spent on gasoline, that's up to a twenty-five hundred dollar difference. It also doesn't include that they might not have, they wouldn't have an oil change. They might have, there might be other maintenance issues, but by and large, I think the electric driver is avoiding some expense on maintenance as well. Now, today, there aren't, there aren't dozens and dozens and dozens of choices. But I think if you follow General Motors, if you follow Ford, if you follow Toyota, Honda, you know, all the providers that are doing, you know, that are on the top of the sales in the United States, I think you can see that there's a, there's a clear trend underway with transitions in mind.
Tesla was valued at a billion, a trillion-dollar company two days ago.
Right, it is, right. And it's surprising at this point and amazing how many of those I'm actually seeing out of the road, you know, and so they are, they're definitely making progress.
Do you think the future is more likely to be charging at a residence as opposed to centralized charging stations? I mean, clearly, depots and delivery services, they cluster it, but is that going to be something we have in our home, like a TV set?
I absolutely think for our membership, there'll be a significant amount of at-home charging. And that's why I believe we will be directly involved in the business. And a couple of things here, and I don't want to take up too much of your time, but the charging may occur, it could occur in the garage, which in that case, it might require the electric service to be reopened and enlarged. But a lot of this, if you think about an F-150 or the Silverado, if you're driving a Chevrolet, there's a good chance it doesn't fit in a lot of garages. A lot of this is going to happen in the driveway. We believe we can do that in an express fashion, coming straight off the transformer to a pedestal-type charging device. And our goal is to do that without adding another meter, but having telemetry for that charging pedestal to talk to the primary meter at the home. So we anticipate REC being directly involved in providing charging infrastructure. It's also going to be very important that we know where the vehicles are going, who's buying it, how many are buying it. Because the study that we're conducting right now looks at every distribution transformer, like the transformer out of the street or on the pole. And we're looking at our winter loading and our summer loading without EVs. Then we're taking that winter and summer loading and we're forcing a Class Two, a Level Two charger, which is about a seven K load. And we're seeing how those transformers do. Okay, now let's put a second charger. Let's, let's say this person buys one and the neighbor buys one. So then how does that transformer do? And we're looking at how ready is our infrastructure at that level? Now, that's at the, kind of right at the street. We have to look all the way back to the substations, all the way back to the generator. And that's the study we are undertaking right now. We want to be able to tell a member if the transformer at their home is ready to roll or whether we need to do an upgrade if they buy a EV. We want to be able to tell our members that very soon.
What is your intuition, at least, as to where the weak link in the chain is? Is it limited by generation or transmission or distribution or the transformer or substation? But your sense of it?
I think we have an advantage, a bit of an advantage as a rural provider at the transformer level of the street, and here's why. Our densities are lower, and so we tend to have a lower ratio of homes to transformer. And in general, there wasn't, you know, a hundred sizes of transformers. There were a few basic sizes. And by and large, the engineers, and I'm one of those, over the years, kind of went a little bigger on average. You know, no one wanted the unit to fail on, you know, on the Fourth of July, when the air conditions were running. So I believe there's, there's some excess capacity at the local level, at the street level and the service connector into the home. When it comes back on our distribution grid, I think that's where we're going to have the first challenges and the generator. The generator, because there's a lot of discussion in the industry about what's called managed charging. And that's great if we can send a bicycle that really encourages nighttime charging. But the problem becomes certain events in life. If a storm is, if a snowstorm is coming tomorrow and you go to the grocery store, everybody's there. I mean, everybody is there. And it's just a natural tendency that when certain events occur, maybe it's the day before Thanksgiving or whatever, there are certain times when consumers just want what they need. And so while we look at a managed charging and a great incentive to charge at night, which could provide even better economics than the twenty-five hundred dollar savings, the problem is that there are times when that might not work. If a hurricane is going up the chest, people are going to charge. We know that. And so we want to look at that, but we also have always built the grid around peak. And so that's a very long answer, but that's a risk.
That's the challenge.
Yes. The other risk is just that the infrastructure is aging. Like any other utility infrastructure, we're investing historic amounts, but still, you know, we've got infrastructure that was built many, many years ago, and it's already taking a lot to keep up.
You know, last winter in Texas, their grid went down, worst-case situation.
Yes.
Are we that vulnerable? And second, you know, kind of combine that with cybersecurity.
Yeah.
You know, you're spending a lot of money in your grids. How reliant are, how much backup do we have to avoid a cybersecurity attack or something?
Great questions. So I served as the CEO of, actually, the largest electric co-op in the nation in Texas. I've spent four years out there in the ERCOT market, and everybody heard a lot about the ERCOT market this past February, around Valentine's Day. That market is quite different than the, what's called the PJM market, which is thirteen states in the District of Columbia. The ERCOT market in Texas is an energy-only market. They don't pay the generators for having capacity. They're just paying for the energy they produce. In Virginia and the states around us, we have a energy and capacity market. And the capacity market is there to provide revenues to the generator, even if they're not called on. So inherently, we have a, an advantage over that Texas model. That's not to say that any market can't reach its breaking point, and what they dealt with in Texas was extreme. The extreme, the most extreme possible between the ice and the single-digit temperatures. So our market is different, and our market is designed to be stronger with respect to the availability of capacity. But much of it is natural gas-dependent. As we, as we've moved away from coal across the nation, it's not been as affordable, and there have been environmental rules that have kind of promoted other resources. So as we've moved away from coal across the nation, there's more weight on nuclear, and there's more, a lot more emphasis on natural gas, and that becomes a pipeline issue. And one of my concerns has continued to be the vulnerability of the pipeline with respect to that. And we saw a little of that, not on natural gas, but we saw a little bit of that, it's not even a year. that, it's not even a year ago with Colonial on the fuel, fuel lines. So the, the, the cyber issue and the capacity issues get tougher for our industry with people working from home, dependent on a stronger connection at home, and now seeking transportation, also fueled by the electric utility. The stakes are getting higher and higher pretty quickly for us in terms of the life cycle of electric utility infrastructure. These are fantastic questions and I could go, go on and on, but I'll, I'll keep going on the slides and I'm glad to chat with anybody, you know, offline or come back and do whatever you all want if you want to talk, talk more about these. We also have some programs to help members with generators. We expect to go further with that. And that could include energy storage as well, battery storage specifically. Okay, on fiber, just quickly, we have 820 mile backbone under construction. We have accelerated that project. It's, it's a over $30 million investment by REC. Orange County was the first to lease a capacity on that and we're glad to lease more capacity, especially as that gets built in other portions of the county. We've accelerated that. We anticipate to be finished with that 820 mile project by mid 2023. We think we can be finished in the Orange County portion mid to late next year. So, so that's from a timing perspective. I think that Route 3, I thought to Mark Hall, he said, around Route 3 near the wilderness area, there was some interest in county connectivity up there. Beyond that, we are now actively engaged in 15 REC counties with, with internet service providers, playing some role in helping them, whether it's the pursuit of funding, whether it's the Louisa type agreement where REC would, will own the fiber and, and firefly will operate, or whether it's an arrangement, maybe with all points for other providers, all points broadband for other providers, where we might even just provide whole attachments. Our message to the membership and to you all as a county is that we are extremely excited about the opportunity to help to enable whatever role REC can play, including any attachments or mounting on our infrastructure. We are very glad to do that and also glad to pursue any kind of joint funding, especially if REC's participation can help make that funding real. A couple of REC updates and reminders. If you're, if you're a member and you're not enrolled in our Smart Hub app, please take a moment, that could be pretty convenient for you. We have paperless and other kind of cost-saving options and ability for you to track your energy usage. Our outage text alerts, we hope that we can keep the power on, but when it's off, it's our goal to provide you an alert. And we are a few weeks, if not a month, away from having a new updated outage map. We want to get a lot more granular and a lot more surgical, if you will, and specific because again, members are working from home, there's more pressure on our team to provide more accurate information as to precisely what we're doing to get the power back on at any location. So what have the membership said? I'll just kind of let that speak for itself, but this last year, we were, we were 17th in the nation for J.D. Powers residential electric satisfaction. That was out of about 145 utilities. Our most recent wave in that study has taken us to 14th. So we're very excited about seeing those results come out again. And our American Customer Satisfaction Index, last year stood at 84, we're now just in touch of over 85. Phenomenal work by our team. Again, you know, right now we're in, well in the top 20. And our recent wave was 14 out of 145 utilities in that study. I will leave you with a couple of thoughts, but one of them is with respect to REC as an employer. We are seeing dramatic retirements. The age and contributions of, of our team members, they've contributed so much over the years, we are seeing 25, 30, 40 year, you know, year contributors, REC that are retiring. And they, they have been such a huge part of building up the co-op. We have a wave of about 20% of our workforce retiring in a five-year window, right that window right now. So as you run into individuals throughout the community, we're trying to partner up with community colleges and others for training programs. But if you know of anybody that is interested in, in REC or, or the energy sector, is a career mill, please send them our way. We, we actually have a recruiter, if you will, now on staff. We have so many positions that we're having to be very, very proactive to, to, to get those employees and to make sure we're retaining our team. So with that, you've been extremely generous with your time. I'll answer any questions.
I can say that I've got a couple of squirrels that have given me trouble. And REC has been extremely responsive in terms of dealing with it. Appreciate it. Plus the learning process, really great. So very pleased.
Thank you.
And this has been very informative. I know we went a little bit beyond the breathing, but I found it very useful.
Thank you.
Guys know many of your employees over the years and every, everyone, every task been top-notch to death.
Very fantastic. We, we could not ask for anything more out of our team. I'm so proud of what they've worked on. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time and thank you for all you're doing. So again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, moving along, that's the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Next is new business, Mrs. Vines. Childcare staff.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before you is a memo from myself that we are, we are extremely, extremely, I'm having extremely hard time finding staff. We've been trying to brainstorm different ideas of how we can recruit. We've had numerous applications put in both on the county website as well as through Indeed. We've scheduled many, many interviews where people have not shown or they've shown, we've actually hired people and then they've taken another job. We are just having a really hard time staffing or challenging programs. So we were trying to figure out different ways we could provide incentives for those staff. One of the things that came up was a potential further discount for the staff that work at the sites only. And the reason that came up is we interviewed staff for our new site manager position and they asked, you know, is there a further discount? We received one where we are now. I asked what that was and they gave it to me and I was almost felt on my chair. But, um, you know, it is something that these staff members are looking for as they're looking for positions. And when we're asking our staff to be on site taking care of other children, we need to make sure that their children are also taken care of in a safe environment. So one of the things that we are requesting is to increase the childcare staff only. We already do a 25% discount for all of our other county employees, but for the ones who are in the trenches at the sites, providing a further discount of 50% for their childcare programs fees. Right now it wouldn't have a financial impact. We only have one staff member currently that has a child that's enrolled and that works at the sites. That child comes sporadically. She did tell me that if, if we did get a further discount, she would probably let her come a little bit more often. But we anticipate actually picking up a few more. We had some interviews and actually showed and they, you know, requested what are the incentives that we have and can I bring my kids with me to work? Absolutely. If you're going to come, you can bring your kids with you too. So that is where the memo came from. So I am respectfully asking that we approve or you guys approve the further discount for the staffs, that we have another incentive for our staff members.
Any questions?
I would ask question. Are the staff shortages within this area more significant than the rest of the county?
Mr. Freeman, I would say that we're experiencing challenges hiring across all of our, all of our lines of business.
How many of the kids are in the, are the children of staff, the members throughout the county?
As a whole, I don't have that number off the top of my head. We do have a lot of teachers' children this year because of the time changes. We experienced that last year as well. The times that schools start, we have our biggest part of our program used to be the aftercare, now it's morning care because the morning program starts, or excuse me, the high school starts so early, so a lot of our teachers need a childcare. So we've seen an increase. Our Locust Road program has 34 to 36 kids every morning and then about the same every afternoon. And that's our biggest program. Our smallest is Lightfoot, which is our most recent program that we opened last year, but they're steadily growing as well. But I can get you that number. I do not have it off the top of my head.
We're, we're, we're trying to do this because we've got staff shortages. But if we have staff shortages across the board, does this make a, does this deserve something different than the rest of our staff shortages? That's, that was the point of the question.
Are you suggesting that we cut it to 50% for all county employees?
Well, that's, would like to understand the fiscal impact of that. As opposed to dealing with one group giving them a preferential discount versus all of our staff? And maybe not, you know, maybe not a 50%, but a 40% for all staff or something like that. I, I don't, I'm not sure what the best approach is.
Well, I think there's actually two, two parts to this, and I was thinking about it, that there is the, the, the staff broadly. But I, I'm not so sure that, I'll ask the question maybe this way. Do, do you think 50% is enough to make a difference in terms of your recruiting for the actual providers themselves? Because I know of situations where if you bring your child, I think it's, in some cases, the first child is free, the second, but you pay a little, sort of stipend kind of a thing. So it's a, it's a real incentive because you're, part of what you're doing is caring for your own child. So I, I mean, I think 50% sounds interesting, but I, if you play that through the, the actual hourly rates and the economics of it, it's, yeah, it's not a strong incentive from a dollars standpoint, so.
I, I can say the, because again, we've had our 25%. The, the person that we interviewed, who actually did take the position, which I'm very thankful for, where they are currently, they get 60% reduction in childcare. She has two kids in childcare and she would look to move them possibly to our program because she would be working. So we would give him two kids. Our licensing is such that we are licensed one adult for every 18 children. We don't try to get that high. We usually do one to 10, one to 12 because there's a lot of moving parts in childcare. And so we aren't as limited staff to children ratio wise as like our infant toddler programs would be where it's one to four. You know, one child at 50% in a one to four ratio is very substantial, so.
I just think the board makes a great point in this discussion. It, it, it may be less costly for us to offer essentially free care as a part of compensation for staff members than, than, than raise wages to the same amount. So it probably would be a, a useful recruitment tool and, and
Go ahead and term it, Chris.
Yeah.
We've had about, I think, three employees that we have, we have hired and in the time it takes to get their background checked done, they found a job elsewhere and never started for us. And so that's very, very frustrating. We've also had two days that I can remember recently where we had four interviews scheduled both day and one person showed up both days. So we're struggling and we just need to make sure we have responsible adults there to, to manage these children. But Mr. Freeman, I can definitely get you that information.
Any thoughts at this point?
Well, when I'm here, it, it sounds like the board supports the general idea, but we're wondering if it's enough or if it's... Are we asking staff to go back and look at it again and maybe? Is that what we're thinking?
I, I think we're past the point of the 50%. I think everybody agrees with that. That's probably not enough and we would be better off because every time you go through the hiring process, the costs account. So we're in a vicious circle. We may be way ahead of the game for this, the rest of this school year. Go ahead, do it like some other things we've done. Pilot program of providing the free care for the employee that is at the site. See how it works. We're thoughtful on that.
There, there's no question, getting people forward is a challenge, like I said.
My, my concern is that we, you know, we, you know, we're looking at public works and we're looking at anywhere else in the, in the county in terms of, you know, that are experiencing, experiencing significant difficulty recruiting staff.
This could be a first step. Like, like I said, it's a, I, I would suggest a pilot program for that very reason. See what it does, one, to stabilize our workforce within childcare. And then secondly, see what the response is from other county employees. Because we'll get it.
We'll get, we'll get a lot, sure.
So what I'm hearing, Mr. Chairman, is that we might be suggesting as, as a, 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 a level of approval for tonight would be to pilot fee-free children of employees in the childcare program for the rest of this school year. And staff will come back to the board with some additional information. Maybe we can survey employees to find out how many other county employees have children and what, what would be our thoughts?
It would be interesting to understand what our competitors are doing.
Yeah, we are doing some survey work now on that.
To sort of put that in a little bit of context, because I'm looking at your fee schedule, your highest rate per week is $70. You know, you divide that by five days and then get a per day rate, you're, you're talking about $4 a day difference. You know, if $4 a day can, of our cost, if you will, or fee, fee foregone can help the recruiting, that's probably a pretty good return on investment. Sort of what the numbers seem to be saying.
And I can say this is the fee schedule that you gave us just recently. I wish we thought about this and had done this all at one time and my apologies for that, but we had just redone it. We are in line with a lot of areas around us. We do a, or I do a survey every, about every two years to see around us similar programs to see how our fees are in alignment with others, to make sure that we're not too high, too low. And they are in line with many of our surrounding areas right now.
To address Mr. Freeman's concern, would there be any interest in bumping it from 25 to 50% for all counties? Just a question.
If that's not too expensive, I certainly like to do that to show that, that, and, and go to zero, go to 100% for the
I can, I can get behind that.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think, I think we should, this is a very valuable tool. We've, we've seen it, Mr. Freeman and I have seen it in another setting where we're facing some of the same issues and we had, it, it allowed people to work that otherwise could not work.
Is that, yeah, yeah.
I would, I would, I would go with that. That, that seems to me to be, it's, it's a pilot and I'd make it pilot in all cases, but I, I think getting an understanding of what, how that helps the rest of the, rest of the staff deal with their recruiting and retention and morale.
Yep. So by consensus?
I do have one question. Because the 25% is for Orange County employees as well as Orange County public school employees, are we saying just for county or just for county?
I think it would be for all.
Okay, I just, I want to be clear before.
No, so, so by consensus, it would be a pilot program until the end of this school year. For the workers at the childcare sites, it would be 100%. For all other county employees, it would be 50%.
Ready to cry.
Thank you, Lee Shubert.
Have a good evening.
And you told me all about just a bunch of screws, right?
When I got up here, I could tell I was flustered because like, how do I express this need, like really express it? Because it has been very frustrating, it's been very difficult. My staff is very frustrated, you know, in working long shifts and we did it through COVID, which, you know, my staff were phenomenal during COVID, but again, to a point now, we need extra support with all of the regulations we have to follow, so.
We, we have finally made that frustration.
For some, yes. Others, we're working internally on doing some employee appreciation things to say.
We found a dogwood that we just, you know, provided some additional, not a lot, but enough, it, it showed that we cared about them and that's what I think we need to say to our employees, absolutely.
And I will say, we do have a lot of employees who are early teens, early twenties that don't have kids, but potentially down the road if this stays, you know, we're looking at potentially gaining more kids and stuff too. And potentially more kids from the school system as well, if you guys do it. I've got goosebumps. Sorry.
Have a good evening.
We applaud your passion.
We're done. Before I make a statement about, from a former board member about be prosperous, please, go ahead and enjoy. Okay, you, you've got it.
Okay, I was, I was waiting for like a, a.
Oh, no, I said, I said, it's, it's.
Okay.
You're good.
I'm not used to that, sorry. Thank you very, very much.
Yes, indeed. Take, take care. Okay.
You've got a good evening for today.
I, I see no old business. I see no Department Director, Council Chief, Call Officer reports. Mr. Latchman?
No reporters.
Mr. Board.
I have nothing major, but one item, just to make sure the board is aware of, in your generosity, in air quotes, of, of appointing me to serve on the Lillridge Cigarette Tax Board. My colleagues on the board, including some of your colleagues from other boards, were generous enough to appoint me as chairman, so I.
Right, that mean we get to cut their taxes.
You have cigars to pass out.
So we went ahead and organized, and Eric Doll from Uvana is Vice Chair. And we'll be meeting again one more time this year in December to try to, to put some of the early purchases in place, to just get, get the, get the apparatus up. But, but the staff at Thompson PDC was appointed as the administrator. So as, as a group there, the administrator, they've already done a lot of good work to get the stamps ready and, and all that. Several jurisdictions have set a tax rate. We have not. That'll be something for us to make up somewhere down the road. But just wanted to give you that update. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good, thank you. All right, board comment. We'll start down with Mr. Marshall.
The comment right today.
Okay, Mr. White?
Nope.
I have none. Johnson?
None at the moment.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. I sat in on a couple of Zoom meetings yesterday. First was Marcus Alert, and they were extremely complimentary of Crystal Hale for work she had done on some of the promotional materials for, for the Marcus Alert. And Chris Cord was there and had been making substantial inputs to the, the areas in terms of how we're going to deal with the calls into nine-one-one, dealing with people with the mental health issues. So just a, a check for two of our department heads. A second Zoom meeting was on the, this was run by Venco, and this was on the opioid settlement. The state is getting something like five hundred and thirty million dollars to be allocated to the various counties in a variety of ways. And there were some things that they mentioned, that people need to be enrolled in the settlement. And just because you file suit doesn't make, doesn't solve the problem. And there needs to be a variety of things done, including some resolutions by the board prior to January second. So I don't know, have you gotten a letter from the, the, I guess that there's a settlement agent that, that, that you've gotten that correspondence?
I've already enrolled us, Mr.
Was that?
I've already enrolled us in this.
Okay, so we're all, we're all.
We're enrolled, which the next step is they send us documentation that we need to do.
Okay, I just, I mean, they were talking about a lot of money, and they were very emphatic that everybody had to have the proper enrollment. So as long as we met that.
What enrollment does is it gets you on the list to get the forms. And so we, we are enrolled and are on the list to get the forms.
Okay, all right, okay. And I, I've got some websites for the forms. If you want, I can send them to you. There's probably stuff you already have, but I'll, I'll send them off to you. Anyway, it just seemed to me to be a lot of money that we ought to be making sure that, that we get our fingers into that, because just like all these other money, monies running around, and this is part of a twenty-three billion dollar settlement that doesn't deal with all the pharmaceutical companies that are still out there to be sued, so. Okay.
Very good. Next is informational items. Moving on to appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Does anyone have any? One, going twice. Next would be the calendar. And under the calendar, we have to schedule SUP twenty-one dash two oh three. So we come off. What date are we looking for on that?
You were December seventh.
Four, maybe.
Anybody, anybody okay with that? What, anybody want to jump? Hearing on December seventh.
Does that count as a chilling, or anything?
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
All right, then we will schedule that. December seventh.
Eighteen.
What's that?
Eighty years, too. Exactly.
Eighty years.
That's right. Okay.
A lot of people, a lot of people probably don't even know about that anymore, or very younger ones.
That's very unfortunate. All right. Next, we shall move into our public hearings. The first one being proposed to Samuel Reed redistricting. Who's going to think what you've done there?
Mr. Chairman, I think Allison is prepared to talk through it. But you'll recall that at this point, the state statute governing redistricting requires public hearing and an ordinance, but we are forbidden from passing anything within a certain period of time of an election. So we want to make it very clear that this redistricting would only apply to the twenty-twenty-two election, not to the twenty-twenty-one election that is, that is facing us here shortly. And, and so we wouldn't be adopting this redistricting ordinance until after the election. And so that would, that would be deferred until one of your December meetings. Allison, do you have some other points you want to make for us?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we do have a number of resources in front of you, including the proposed district boundary, precincts, boundary maps, a list of the currently proposed polling place locations. And then just for reference, this population summary charts. And I did go ahead and prepare the draft ordinance. It's, it's in your packet. As Ted mentioned, you can't take action this evening, but you can have your public hearing this evening to open and receive public comments, close the public hearing. And then the county attorney and I will be working on a letter to the Attorney General's Office to submit your proposal. We'll bring it back for action at your November seventeenth meeting at Lake of the Woods. I know I'll, I'll open the floor for changes that the chairman has already mentioned to me so that we can get them communicated out. Ted's already done a good job highlighting that those changes will not, thank you. That those changes would not take effect until any elections in twenty-twenty-two and beyond. And finally, when you take action by ordinance, you'll be establishing the district boundaries, precinct boundaries, and polling place locations. Those are the three required steps.
In District Four, we're going to have to go back to the original polling places. Apparently, it is detrimental to people's health to not be able to use their swimming pool on the second Tuesday in June. So we will not be utilizing the community center. Community center will be insured.
So it will, that will be going back to where?
We will be utilizing the middle school and the primary. Those will be the two polling locations.
So is there any need to change the, the boundaries or?
Of the, the east and west?
Yeah.
No.
Boundary's going to stay the same as.
As what was proposed.
Now, my understanding is that, however, that it could only be like a mile.
Yeah, it has to be within a mile. I was going to mention that in my comments.
That'd be within a mile of the precinct.
The polling location has to be within a mile of, of the boundary. So I don't think the middle school, you might have to tweak your boundary a little bit.
Is that as the crow flies or nautical miles or?
It says the crow flies. It's, I can, it's nine, it's twenty-four point two dash three ten. I got it right here.
If it says the crow flies, we should be okay.
The polling place for each precinct shall be located within the county or city and either within the precinct or within one mile of your precinct boundary.
We're fine because of that precinct.
Until it's twenty, comes up and touches twenty.
It's, it's across the street. Yeah, but this is the way it's currently going.
It looks to me like the precinct doesn't go across Route Three.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're considering.
Yeah, there, there's one piece that comes across Route Three.
I mean, they would go back to the original boundary.
Yeah, the, the mileage, what was?
One mile.
But is that?
That's a straight line.
Straight line, mile?
It's a straight line.
Okay, but we may be, I, I would say that we should go back to the original boundary lines, and that puts us right there at the middle school.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? Have we ever attempted Germanic Community College as a precinct type polling place?
No, but I don't know if that is a.
They're, they're, I don't know what that.
Will it last for ten years? It will be there for ten.
Well, if, if, yeah, that's, it's going to be a different building.
I mean, is there any problem with, I mean, these can be changed two years from now if there's a need to change them, right?
You can change the precinct, the precincts, absolutely. The polling places.
Precinct boundaries or polling places?
Polling places, yeah. Polling places.
Precinct boundaries can only be done as part of the ten-year redistricting.
I want to raise a question to that.
But, I mean, the, 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 if, if you adopt this one, Germanic is still within it, so you could move, you know, if at some point you wanted to move it over there to get it closer to the population center. But, I mean.
The thing, they've been voting at the middle school already.
Right, right.
But the, but the precinct boundaries were different.
Right. Is there anything about, at a state institution?
I know Charlotte, so it uses University of Virginia facilities.
In that case, we can check with, I hate to keep jumping back and forth. We're moving. Why, why don't we keep the original precinct boundaries and polling locations?
What do you consider original?
The, the current voting precinct?
Yes, the current voting.
Yes, this, this one here, the current voting precinct.
Okay.
Obviously, only as it would apply to that one precinct, because all the other ones are different.
Right, which is.
So you'd have to do a fusion of these two.
Yes, sir. So it would be the new boundary line between District Four and District Three.
The new, the new boundary line, but these precinct boundaries within the new District Four would remain what they currently are.
Right, so the current dividing line for the precincts would remain the same. The only thing that would be changing is your boundary line that's moving further east, northeast, north.
Northwest.
Northwest, okay.
Which, if I understand it, the purpose of which is to make the polling place within the one mile, the one miles.
Actually, they're within the.
Okay, I mean, I might, I might not say, did anything, we change anything here, or is that the same?
No, all of that's, that's the same, so. So that is the absolute simplest thing to do.
Yeah, so the, the, you're going from, you're going from, from this map, which is that sort of dark yellow is all on the other side of Route Three, to this map where it comes down here. So you're really only changing the line between four east and four west is what we're talking about changing.
Right, it's just going to make the four west boundary, or the four west precinct a lot smaller.
Yes.
Because the District Three boundary is coming over, which is going to make the population very lopsided. But there's nothing that says we have to have the precincts divided evenly. It, it just makes the population divide and the precincts really skewed.
It's, it's convenience.
Because that one strip, that one census tract that runs in your district along the back of Lake of the Woods, that one census tract has over five hundred.
Or because it's lived in the lake and outside the lake.
And outside of the lake, yes. So we kept kind of creeping over.
Yeah, the polling places are convenient, the most convenient location for the voters, right? Isn't that the?
Well, generally, but you know, you also have to, I mean, it's obvious there aren't very many polling locations available.
No, and, and from what I understand, if in fact, Germanic is a viable polling location, after we adopt this, the following election, the polling place could be changed to Germanic.
Right, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I think the two existing ones is simple, it's understood, we know how to do it, so.
That's all we'll do.
But of course, your, your, uh, four east is the biggest growing also. And then you're going to make it the biggest, and it's going to be the biggest growing, so.
Biggest what?
Growing.
In terms of.
Oh, which is growing.
I will, I will again point out that technically, December thirty-first is the deadline, but every jurisdiction, or most jurisdictions are basically saying we can't make that deadline. So there's nothing that prevents us from saying, you know, open a public hearing, bump this out, talk to Germanic.
Yeah, I was going to say, we, we can't.
We can't really deny it.
We can't deny it, right.
So then are you suggesting then open the public hearing and leave it open until we can talk to Germanic and see if that's an option?
Well, we, we can either open the public hearing, or we don't have to leave it open. But, oh, good idea just to give the public plenty of opportunity, let them notice how proactive we must to.
Especially since we're changing something, yeah.
But, yeah, I, open the public hearing, leave it open, and then come back, you know, maybe speak, talk to Germanic.
Are there any other concerns?
Yes. Oh, District Three on the western side, we're constricting the precinct, the voting precinct, to fill the boundaries of Town of Orange. What was the reasoning again for that, for the record? Versus what it was prior state code?
Yeah, just so that when, when an Orange citizen gets a Town of Orange citizen, it's just their ballot.
So you have to, they have to have their own precinct now.
Right, to, to, because you're not supposed to have split precincts. So that the town is large enough to be its own.
I guess maybe I would make the proposal that we would create a third precinct and maybe use the new Public Safety Building as a voting precinct.
So if we didn't, I mean, I don't understand. One thing that that will do is.
You're making everybody on the western, west of Orange drive all the way to Unionville. And that is a little bit of an inconvenience.
It is, just one thing to remember, we would have to change the board meeting because our board meeting will be scheduled the same day, I believe.
Well, and the discussion from several weeks ago was that while the Town of Orange would become its own precinct and the rest of District Three would be the second precinct, in the Sedwick Building is also the central, it's designated by ordinance to be the central absentee voting precinct. So that is where anyone in the county can go to vote ahead of election day.
Not on election day.
Well, Keith, I'm a little confused because you said a third one, but you wouldn't want both the Public Safety Building and, and Unionville School. Because they're not, they wouldn't, they would both be very small precincts.
Well, geographically, they're not small, but you're right, voter-wise, they're, they're extremely small. I could just see this as a dispatch for someone that wants to vote least to the last day, and he has to drive almost twenty miles to go vote. Fifteen. As he drives through Orange.
Then we could get an exhibit together, what that would look like.
That I would think with the new facility. Maybe we, we should constrict it just down to the Public Safety, then that would be more centralized.
We, we'd put the, the voting site back in, in the district.
In such a. In such a.
We we'd put the the voting site back in in the district, which is not current. Not a big deal, it's close, but it's.
Just an option, I thought.
Yeah, I mean, I I I thought about that building, but yeah, that that would, I think that would make an improved place, uh, as opposed to going out to Unionville.
How's that in District two?
Phil, I have a question for you. What are the restrictions regarding the polling place being in that building?
Um, you, I I don't know what the building looks like, but I assume they have, I mean, they, like we were talking about with Wilderness Shores, it has to be a room that's exclusively used for that.
Okay. Okay, that box to check out.
Did the restrooms?
Well, generally, they have to have restrooms for, you know, the staff has to be able to, you know, they're there for eighteen hours and you need to go.
The other question is, you said that you have to go in the main door to the building, to a common area, and then to the left to go to the area where the voting would be. Is that acceptable? Because that is.
And that's kind of like the the, um, community center at Lake of the Woods is kind of like that.
Okay, I I just, after the question you raised, I just want to make sure that we don't do something and then find out you can't do it.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah, even like what you do, that you go into a lobby area and then you ultimately go into what I guess was a gym at one time.
Yeah, right, right, so.
Okay.
And there's plenty of parking there, right?
Yeah.
So you're thinking of using that instead of Unionville?
People can drive up front for a curbside voting too.
Yeah.
I mean, there's only, there's only a few hundred people who vote at Prospect who don't live in the Town of Orange. I don't think it's a large amount. I I think I gave you the numbers once, but I don't remember exactly. It didn't seem like it was a large amount. So having a precinct with only five hundred people would be kind of expensive.
I was thinking more of the convenience of the location and the traffic to go vote.
Right, but then I want, if you make it, if you make it at the at the, that news site you're talking about, what do you call that?
Public safety.
Public safety. What about the people who live out near Unionville?
Well, they're probably near equal distance, left, uh, east or west.
Yeah.
It is more such class.
Absolutely is, yeah. Got it?
Okay.
So, just.
With that being said, do we want to open the public hearing?
We'll we'll open your public hearing because you advertised if they don't like.
And just leave everything.
Leave it open, staff will make the suggested changes so that you can see them again.
Okay.
And just just for the record, what I'm hearing is a change in polling place location for District four east precinct from the current proposal of Wilderness Shores Clubhouse to Germana? Are we taking polling place location or boundary?
Yes, yes, yes. No boundary changes.
Okay.
Just polling.
Polling place location.
Yes, as long as Germana's on board.
If Germana buys it, Germana's okay with it.
Yes. And then in District three, a change from the current proposal of Unionville Elementary School to the public safety building.
All right, keep, have three precincts.
Okay. We can get an exhibit together either way.
Yeah, okay, yeah, get an exhibit with three precincts that were just, there'll be location and polling place.
Okay.
All right, are we good there?
Yeah, it would be, I think it'd be helpful to know what the what the the population.
The numbers are, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
All right, any any other questions before we go to the public hearing? Open the public hearing on the proposed assembly of redistricting. Do we have any?
Um, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, and I I do want to remind you of the two written comments that are contained in your packet um, from Chelsea Quintern and Ashley Jenkins Beckham, and we have one speaker signed up, and that's Ms. Jomieyn Speeden, and she is a representative of the Electoral Board.
I already said what I needed to say.
All right, very good, and we will, um, keep this public hearing open until our next board meeting. Correct, are you?
Yes.
Yeah, totally agree.
So we will still take a public comment either by email and post it at the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
All right, so it shall remain open, and we will move on to our next public hearing, which is ZTA twenty-one dash eight-two, uh, an amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Chair, members of the board, ZTA twenty-one oh-two is an amend, uh, proposed amendment to the zoning code to definition of accessory apartments. This was initiated by the Board of Supervisors and was heard before the planning commission on September sixteenth, where a public hearing was conducted. At the public hearing, there was one speaker in attendance, and we received no written comments. What this amendment proposes to do is amend the definition of existing term in the code for accessory apartments. The accessory apartments in Orange County have free restrictions, and this would remove three of the four restrictions that are currently in the code, as well as language refers to accessory apartment as completely independent standalone, which which is unclear at times, and so remove that additional language and remove three, three to four restrictions. I have a memo in your files from for me and you, just to run through the three restrictions that would be lifted as the one that would remain. Uh, accessory apartments are essentially accessory dwelling units on a parcel or what we call a lot in Orange County. Three restrictions that would be removed would be the one that permits no more than a gross square footage of eight hundred square feet. The restriction that the accessory apartment shall not exceed the square footage of the primary dwelling on which the accessory apartment can be located on the same lot, and that the accessory apartment contain no more than two bedrooms. The last restriction that there be no more than one accessory apartment per lot would be the planning commission recommends approval, staff批准 approval of this.
Any questions for staff? If not, go ahead and open the public hearing. We have any speakers signed up?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman. We didn't receive any written comments.
Okay. Close the public hearing. Okay, any further discussion?
So, just to make it clear, conditions one, two, and three were removed. Condition four became number one, and condition two was.
Correct, and just a question, possible suggestion. Is there any possibility in the future as we do these, when we strike verbiage and add new verbiage, uh, we can delineate the colors? Make it a little bit easier to to see what we're getting rid of and what we're keeping, because at first glance it appears that number two of the ordinance is being deleted. That would be, that would be helpful, just make it a little bit easier.
The the new language, uh, that I guess becomes number two, uh, I've read that maybe five times, and I've figured up with five interpretations of what that's trying to tell me. So let me ask the question, Mr. Ray, are we trying to say that the accessory apartment is subject to the ten feet setback or the various thirty-five and fifties and so forth? What is our intent?
I think by code, it has to be subject to the various setbacks based on zoning that that they're real.
So so the.
That's correct.
Part of the zoning that used to provide for the ten feet no longer applies, is that what we're saying?
That's my third interpretation.
Well, this is an accessory apartment. Okay, so if this were a shed, it could be ten feet, correct?
Depending on the district.
Well, yeah, but theoretically, without, okay.
But because it's a a accessory apartment, it goes to the thirty-five or eighty-five if you're on a corner.
So it's. It's accessory every way except for purposes of setback.
Per.
Okay, I think, I I think that's what.
That's what it says.
Okay.
The the way the code is interpreted, the more specific, which this is, always trumps the less specific, which is the general accessory structure.
Okay, I I guess kind of the word deemed is what kept causing me to go indifferent.
It is, it is going to be the more restrictive setbacks. All right, which unfortunately, that's on the record now, we know what we're talking, yes, I have a property that is directly affected by that, so. All right, any further discussion?
One question for Tom, this in no way supersedes any deed restrictions or covenants of all waters.
No, we don't, I'm sure we don't.
Just confirm that for the record as well. Just before, I mean, that's that changed to go from allowing ten to, I guess the minimum was what? Well, in ag, it's either twenty or thirty-five.
But that could impact a lot of properties. And it can actually be up to eighty-five feet if you're on a corner lot.
Yeah, if you got issue with the road, right? I I just, I just want to point out that that's a, that's potentially a quite restrictive addition. Maybe we need it, maybe it's necessary and wise.
Well, I think it's more necessary the larger the structure is going to be. If you're only paying on our fees, probably not so much necessary, but if it's unlimited amount of square feet, then I think it should be more restrictive.
And I think that's right, I mean, I I I just want to make sure we're, we we do things at times and and find out we have to go back and check two months later that maybe that's not gonna work and well, in a number of cases. This one may be funny, it's just I I can envision a couple of properties, let's say, in my district where there was a desire to put an accessory apartment on there. The place it should go is very close to the property lot. I'm not sure you could, you can, because you have wells, septic, and other things that you have to be away from. So I I, it's just a, it's a concern.
Well, I think that, I mean, part of our, part of our reasoning, and I, what you're saying is absolutely right, every time you you adopt a rule, you you set up, you know, you just set up something for somebody to trip over, uh, but I I thought part of the reasoning was that there are other things, one reason we can do this because there's some other restrictions. So you you still have to meet setbacks, you still have to have a, you know, like, health department permit and so forth and so on. I I mean, I it it seems to be, if you're in a situation where you where you can't meet the setback, probably you shouldn't be putting a large structure there to be able to. I mean, this is not gonna affect stuff that's already done. Not directly, indirectly.
Well, it it can also be attached, that's the other issue, we would move that that separate standalone notion to now include things that that are attached. In some cases, the the logical place of attachment, you know, could encroach on.
But we can still attach.
Well, in that case, well, Mr. White, in that case, if it's an attachment to the primary structure, then it's always gonna have the primary structure setback. So that's all we do. But, you know, what I'm hearing you say is that there are exceptional cases, and there are certainly exceptions you could write into your to say, except in the cases for structures that are eight hundred square feet, which case they shall be considered accessory structures. That's one way to do it.
But I'm afraid that takes us back to a place we don't want to be, so.
Those people are choices.
Well, we'll we'll see how it works. I mean, I'm I'm fine with it, I understand it, I think it's it's a good thing, it's just that it's.
It may need to be revisited again.
Do remember, if somebody has a super oddball lot, then there is the possibility of a variance in weight as well. So if there's something very unique about your lot that keeps you from doing this setback, that nobody else has the same problem, then then that might be an issue, or if.
And this actually less we should have than what we currently have, which is what our goal is.
The situation that I that I envisioned when I first took myself into this journey was if you have a typical lot with issues of well, septic area plus a second septic area identified, uh, you may be completely prohibited from accessory dwelling unit because of those, and the only place available would encroach on certainly the thirty-five feet setback from the property line for that property owner. So that property owner would be denied, uh, the permit.
That is true. We have talked to the health department about shared systems, and so there is still that option too. They don't have to necessarily have a complete one hundred percent. Uh, it ties the two structures together in a way that people may not want to do, but there is the option of a shared system.
We'll see how it works out, but.
I was going to say, at the present time, this seems to be the best, least restrictive that we can do, and there's always unforeseen circumstances that are caused by it, and if so, we'll have to come back and address it. Yep, any further discussion? I would entertain the movement.
I move we approve.
I'll second.
Second. All right, Allison?
Yes, sir, and Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
And Mr. Cray?
Aye.
Five zero.
After this. Yes, at this time, uh, we have public comment period. Is there anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, in that case, open public comment, close public comment. At this time, Mr. Latsney, if he would read the magic words.
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss the closed meeting of following matters. Discussion of consideration of acquisition of real property for public purpose or the disposition of public and all real property. Discussion in an open meeting that after state effect of bargaining, position to negotiate and strike the public body concerning blue belt loading and sheltering Orange building. Consultational legal counsel employed to retain both public and real property regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal vice specimens counsel concerning crucial revenue. Whereas pursuant to sections two point two, thirty-seven, one, A three and A eight, the state Virginia section discussions made current closed meeting now therefore be resolved, the Board of Supervisors of Orange County is hereby authorized discussion for state management closed meeting, need that as a motion.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're in closed session.
Walker, can you please pause the livestream for closed?
See how many people are watching this last couple of minutes.
So where is Walker? Is he in the building or is he removed?
I don't know.
No, sir.
Over at the public safety building. You guys are all good now?
Is everyone ready to go? Walker?
Yes, you guys are in.
Thank you. Members of the board, to the best of your knowledge, we're the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, excuse me, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements. And that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened or heard discussed or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Brain?
Aye.
Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
And Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
I would entertain a motion for adjournment. Sir. Paul and Tyler?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you everyone.